Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mandy, could you please call and roll?
DeYoung.
Here.
Raynor Horse.
Here.
Butler.
Here.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Here.
Ian Straylon.
Here.
All right, could I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
So moved.
For Brandon Horse and Strylan, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Brandon Horse, yes. Ian Straylon.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. Brandon, would you meet me up here? Good evening. We're gonna administer the oath of office for you this evening, so I'll just let you read it up there. So if you wanna raise your right hand and read the oath, and then I'll give you a copy for you.
I, Brandon Housman, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, discharge all the duties of the office of police officer in the city of Pella, county of Marion, state of Iowa, as now and hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And welcome.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming to the house.
Thanks.
Thanks. Welcome, Brandon.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, we'll move on. This is an opportunity for public forum. Anyone wishing to address counsel regarding any agenda item, please step forward with the microphone, state your name and address, and please try to limit your comment to three minutes. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda? DeYoung, Carlstone, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ian Straylon.
Yes.
Raynor Horse.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to a public hearing regarding rezoning ordinance for 309 South Street. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. What we have this evening is a public hearing for 309 South Street. That's the top, property located on the top map in the yellow highlighted area. The next presentation will actually be for 309 and 322 because they're both very similar. So we have the property at 322 this evening. So basically, both of these requests are from M2, heavy industrial, to CC, community commercial. Mandy, let's go ahead, please. This probably explains it the best. Whenever you have kind of what I would call these tweeners, better from a zoning perspective. In other words, when we look at the zoning on it, you have the future use land map, which is the guy, the zoning map, which is the law. Everything we look at for rezonings, when you look for rezonings, is there adjacent zoning district or a budding zoning district that has the same zoning designation. Community commercial is in close proximity to both of these properties right here. So from staff's standpoint, evaluating this, from the future use land map identifies these properties for something different. Property is currently being used as commercial property today. It also has community commercial zoning that in close proximity on the zoning from zoning districts. And so our recommendation would be, we believe it conforms to the city's comprehensive plan, and mainly because there's community commercial zoning that's in close proximity, and that's how traditionally the property's been used on it. So staff believes with that, our recommendation is for approval of both of these ordinances this evening. Planning a zoning commission, considering this item at their July 22 meeting. It is also important to note that the applicant this evening is requesting waiver and second and third ordinance readings, so.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Any written comments?
The only written comment was from the applicant with the waiver request.
Okay. Counsel, any oral comments? Okay, any member of the audience have a comment about this? All right, then I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Mr. Strylan?
Support.
Brandon Horse, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Ian Straylon.
Yes.
Raynor Horse.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to ordinance number 1045 entitled, An Ordinance Amending the Zoning Ordinance of the City of Pella, Iowa by Amending the Boundaries of the CC District to Include the Property Located at 309 South Street, and Directing the Zoning Administrator to Note the Ordinance Number and Date of This Change on the Official Zoning Map. This is the first reading. I have a motion for approval.
So moved.
For Brandon Horse, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Raynor Horse.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ian Straylon.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to set aside the rules and place on the third final reading.
What?
Brandon Horse, DeYoung, any discussion on that motion?
Is there urgency to it?
There's no urgency. I did speak to all of the budding properties, and they're all in favor. So in the interest of time, since the property owners are all enthusiastic about this change, I thought the way you did would be prudent.
Okay, anything else? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Raynor Horse.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ian Straylon.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to adopt.
Support.
Mr. Strylan, Brandon Horse, on a motion to move to adopt ordinance number 1045, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Ian Straylon.
Yes.
Raynor Horse.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Motion passed. So we've already had the presentation for the rezoning ordinance for 322 South Street. Any written comments?
No additional, besides the applicant.
Okay. Counsel, any comments? Anybody in the audience have a comment?
Is that parking lot required for the volume of parking spaces if that goes to, let's say, retail?
I'd like to refer that question back to Jerry Bydas, planning and zoning director.
It all depends on what the retail space is. Each of our retail sectors have specific code requirements, or whether it's a retail store or a dogstore lot or something like that, so it all depends. Do you look at that upon an application for that type of business?
It's a buildable lot. It doesn't have any restrictions at all there. It's the only... CC doesn't necessarily refer to that though, if you do it on the other end.
Okay, anything else? Any member of the audience have a comment? All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
So moved.
Brandon Horse, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Raynor Horse.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ian Straylon.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the ordinance number 1046 entitled, An Ordinance Amending Zoning Ordinance of the City of Pella, Iowa by Amending the Boundaries of the CC District to Include the Property Located at 322 South Street, and Directing the Zoning Administrator to Note the Ordinance Number and Date of this Change on the Official Zoning Map, first reading. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Mr. Strylan, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Ian Straylon.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Raynor Horse.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to set aside the rules and place on the third final reading.
So moved.
Okay, Brandon Horse, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Raynor Horse.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ian Straylon.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to adopt.
Mr. Strylan, Brandon Horse, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Ian Straylon.
Yes.
Raynor Horse.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, moving on to a public hearing on the proposal to vacate a storm sewer easement and overland flow easement located on Lot 10 of the Boss Lawn in the State's subdivision. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item, and what we have is actually two resolutions on this. First resolution is going to vacate the existing storm sewer easement that's with this property in Boss Lawn in the States, and the second resolution is establishing the new stormwater easement, as well as accepting the public infrastructure on the property. And that's in essence what's occurred, is the property owner rebuilt the storm sewer to a different location on the property that was more suitable to building on the lot. As a part of that, we're going to vacate the stormwater easement that we had. So that's the first ordinance that we have. And the second ordinance is actually accepting the easement for the new stormwater infrastructure, as well as the physical improvements. So Mandy, I believe we've stated everything here. And so what that would be more than having to answer any questions that counsel may have on this item.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Any written comments, Mandy?
No written comments.
Counsel, comments?
Then this lot will be able to be used, is that correct?
Jerry, do you want to answer that?
I did not hear the question.
Will this lot be able to be used?
Well, it's able to be used now, it'll just be more utilizable.
Okay.
The old easement pretty much got through the middle of the lot. They're building a lot bigger houses than ever expected, so moving it open.
Okay, anything else, counsel? Any member of the audience have a comment, question? All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Brandon Horse, DeYoung, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Raynor Horse.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins. Hopkins.
Yes.
Ian Straylon.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, moving on to resolution number 6737 entitled, Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Vacation of Storm Sewer Easement and Overland Flowage Easement Located on Lot 10 of the Boss Lawn in the State's subdivision. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
So moved.
Brandon Horse and Strylan, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Raynor Horse.
Yes.
Ian Straylon.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number 6738 entitled, Resolution Accepting Public Improvements from Harwood and Megan Bowman Improving and Accepting a Permanent Overland Flowage and Storm Sewer Easement Located on Lot 10 of the Boss Lawn in the State's subdivision. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
DeYoung, Brandon Horse, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Raynor Horse.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ian Straylon.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to a public hearing regarding the proposed development agreement with the Courtyard's Land Holding LLC. We need to postpone it to the third?
That's staff recommendation.
Okay, so do I have a motion to continue this public hearing to the next regular council meeting on September 3rd?
So moved.
Support.
DeYoung, Brandon Horse, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Raynor Horse.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ian Straylon.
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number 6739 entitled, Resolution Approving and Authorizing Execution of a Private Construction Agreement By and Between the City of Pella and Pella Corporation. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. What we have this evening is a development agreement with Pella Corporation. And in essence, what this project involves is replacement of the existing sanitary sewer and some public sanitary sewer main in the yellow highlighted area. Through this agreement, Pella Corporation is proposing that they'll replace the sanitary sewer main 100% of their cost on the project. And so we'll find out looking here, Mandy, on slide number two. Is there anything else that we have? But it's also important to note, even though Pella Corporation is paying all the cost to the project, the infrastructure will still be owned by the city, and it'll still be a public sanitary sewer main. So with that, Mr. Mayor, we're recommending approval of the resolution along with the agreement with Pella Corporation.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
So moved.
Brandon Horse, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Raynor Horse.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ian Straylon.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to ordinance number 1047 entitled, An Ordinance Amending Solid Waste Fees in the City of Pella, Iowa. This is the first reading. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as the mayor of the works stated, this ordinance would increase solid waste fees 10%. It's important to note, it's the same ordinance that we discussed on August 6 during policy and planning. As far as the rate increase is entirely dependent on the size of the toad. A dollar twenty-six for a small toad, up to a dollar eighty-four for a large toad. So with that, Mr. Mayor, there's essentially no new information from August 6, and we are approving and recommending approval this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved. So moved.
DeYoung and Strylan, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Ian Straylon.
Yes.
Raynor Horse.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion. Motion passed. Okay, moving on, abstract of bills number 2157. Can I get a motion for approval?
Move to approve initial warrants.
Second. Brandon Horse, Butler, any discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Raynor Horse.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ian Straylon.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Motion passed. Any council member of any other business you would like to address, have addressed this evening? Any members of the public have any other business you'd like to address counsel with this evening? Please step forward, state your name and address, and try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Twenty-five oh nine School District, what was the duration of those rate increases? Is that monthly, daily, yearly?
Yeah, it's billed on a monthly basis.
Those are monthly rates.
Yes.
Could you maybe, Anita Fisher, fifteen forty-six Pleasant Drive? So, um... How many of you received one of these in the mail? Right? Okay. Maybe make you weak at the knees, you had a little few choice words, maybe? Right? So wasn't expected? Nobody can answer that if it was expected? Well, for many of us, it wasn't. Okay? So when we read that we had an increase, it was quite a shock, and it made us sit there and think and look back, okay, now we're gonna have to figure out how we're gonna spend money. Get down a brass tacks. So the reason I'm bringing that up is because... I don't know how many of you follow what's been happening with the EMS. That's been maybe happening at the county level, and happening here. The problem is, is I don't know if you guys do. And I think we need to be looking at it. I'm not sure if the city council's gonna be bringing it up at any time, but it's looking like... It's looking like it's going to be a maximum levy rate of possibly seventy-five cents per a thousand for the EMS service. And if I have my numbers correct, it's gonna have to be at least sixty percent of Marion County is gonna have to vote for this EMS service. So, so anyway, I want to make sure that we all are aware of this, that it's coming down the pipe. Okay? Because I don't know if very many of us do know that. So that means if you have a $300,000 house, that would be maybe $225 a year. Now, I'm not saying I'm for this or against this, but I just want people to be aware that this is coming, most likely. So that's all I have to say about that. But thank you so much for your time.
Anyone else? All right, we will move into policy and planning. We have a few items on the agenda. Our first one is pickleball court's request. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to direct the council's attention to the big board on this item. And what we have is during the July 16 meeting, we had a policy and planning session on the discussion regarding the Central College partnership. That agreement staff is still in the process of working with Central College on that particular agreement. We anticipate coming back at a future date for Central College. But what we're hearing talk about was the other items that were requested on that night. There was a discussion, one ended up dating on Caldwell, Quanis Park, excuse me, court status. And more importantly, not more importantly, but equally important was also asked was industry standards for how many courts a community our size should have. And that's really the point of tonight's meeting, is we just want to make sure we're all on the same page, as we're planning amenities in the community and spending fiscal of the city's money on items that we understand, you know, what are the industry averages for communities our size as far as amenities. So let's go ahead, Mandy, please. Now, the information that we have here comes to us from a couple of different sources, both of them are industry standards on this as well. And based off the information from the sports and fitness industry, as well as the National Park and Rec Association, what we have is listed up on here is the type of outdoor facility, tennis, pickleball, and multi-use. Now, based off the city census on 2020, it appears on our research that the number of tennis courts that we should have available for public play is roughly 3.7, pickleball courts 3.2, multi-use courts 2.1. And with the tennis and pickleball courts that we currently have, keep in mind when we sold Caldwell Park, North Caldwell Park, to the school district, through that agreement, it's stated with the city's agreement, what we reserve is when those courts are not in use, they're gonna be available to the public. And so that's something that the school district's obligated for. So when we look at tennis courts, currently what we have available is 12 tennis courts. City's Caldwell, ten, Caldwell, pickleball courts are currently at six. Industry standards state 3.7. As far as multi-use courts, we're a little lagging on those, but we believe through our agreement with Central College, and Jeanette, correct me if I'm wrong, there's six courts through Central College agreement for multi-use?
Well, there would be six tennis with 12 pickleball overlay, and then depending on the time of the year, some of those courts would remain tennis, but there would always be a minimum of six pickleball.
Technical answer, yeah. Yeah, so for discussion purposes, the number of courts through that agreement is six. So we believe with the Central College agreement that we actually be above industry standards as well on it. And before we go on with the presentation, is there any questions on what industry standards recommend for communities?
And in relation to the city of college, those numbers are absurd. In Goliath, the facilities, they're...
People have told me they're waiting all the time. You know, I've heard people say, there are 12 people waiting when I show up.
From my perspective, that's a service-level discussion that the city council needs to have, and based off Jeanette, the research that the community services department has as far as these are averages, correct?
Correct.
So council's always at, it's council's decision if we want to go above and beyond this, and so we're simply answering the provided.
Like you said, you have to drive by.
Yeah, you just look at people waiting. I mean, you can find statistics, but they don't mean anything. You have to look at what happens in Caldwell.
I'll try to figure out the pickleball on point two. But that's an average.
I do think it's important, as we consider spending resources that we keep in mind industry standards, along with local demand as well. And I think the key point of this is finding the happy demand, a happy mix. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, from staff's standpoint, what we want to talk about is the Quanis courts on here as well. With a court estimation and significant renovation cost, what we want to inform council is, is where the process is currently trying to construct Phase Three of the Wonderspiel and project. And what we're planning on doing is using the courts for staging area this fall, because we thought that this may take some time as far as working out the finances for the courts on it. So we wanted to inform council that we're planning on using a staging area. And from our perspective, whether we remove the courts or renovate the courts, that's likely gonna have to be next spring anyway, as far as the project is concerned. So from staff's standpoint, what we're planning on doing is holding work sessions on the Quanis courts now that we have the numbers, and we anticipate doing that as we consider the Central College partnership agreement as well.
How do we know how many pickleball courts are in Pella? Seems to me that'd be more relevant than an industry standard.
Jeanette, and you wanna address that question?
I believe we have some audience members.
Okay.
Actually, I have a handout if you guys wanna... It's just kind of a stat. It's just kinda give you just like a basic historic overview of pickleball. Just so you guys just kinda have a...
And Mike, on our, on our agenda here, can you explain the first column, court per one-thousand resident? On the, on the agenda, this table that's on here. Court per one-thousand residents, you got a number there. Where's it said?
Jeanette, you wanna address council member Butler's question? As far as, I think we, we're concerned about the table as far as number of pickleball courses. I subscribe, council member Butler.
Well, I, I don't understand the number of court per one-thousand residents. In tennis, it says twenty-eight-hundred-and-five. Was that number? Mean or number? It's not on here, it's not on there, but it's on the...
The, on the, on the PowerPoint, that first bullet for the sports industry and the pickleball head reporting, that's two-point-three dedicated pickleball courts per one-thousand players. The numbers below are based on population. So, in the memo for like tennis, for each twenty-eight-hundred residents, you need one dedicated tennis court. So that's where those numbers come in. I wasn't able to find an apples-to-apples comparison between the pickleball, a pickleball industry-type stats versus a national recreation park. So that's why they're a little different.
I would agree with tables. This would say you need two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-five courts per one-thousand residents. Should not be. Yes, I think that's what we're trying to get at, Jeanette.
Yeah, it should say one, one court per res, per that residence. So it shouldn't be one thousand, it should be one.
So if we need, excuse me, two-point-three pickleball courts per one-thousand residents, and we have ten units of one-thousand residents in Pelham, we would need, you know, twenty-three courts.
I think, just to clarify, I think I heard her say the thousand is players, not, not population. The table below is, the thousand was players. The table below was population.
Two-point-three courts per thousand players?
Per thousand players.
And, and the other problem is, is that you don't play pickleball twenty-four hours a day.
You don't. And it's a herd, it's kind of, pickleball is like an interesting sport. You can't go by the porch and you're not gonna see, you might not see anybody because it's a group sport, do you know what I mean? So it's kind of like a herd mentality, like you can show up with like a big group of people. You can have forty-five people at one time in the morning, but like in the afternoon, you're not. Right? So it's not like they're used twenty-four-seven, but when they're, when we have an organized play, the courts are full, and overfull.
Oh, I understand.
And then you can't have like an event or anything like that because if you have an event, then you take it away from the community. So, let's say we wanted to have, the Caldwell courts, that means that the community would have nowhere to buy.
Quick question. Pelham High does not have pickleball-marked courts, right?
It does not.
Which is a crime shame. Do we turn...
You guys said no?
No?
I mean, it is the most beautiful facility.
It is.
It is stunning. It's stunning.
I mean, I, I see it open so much when people would love to be able to use it.
They really want to come on there?
I don't know. Well, I'm, I'm still the one that gets bombarded between every minute, uh, between every meeting. You know, how come we can't get Kowalski going? You know, if we can exhaust every way possibly fixing that place up.
Like, we're open to many things. I mean, Central is a great stopgap for us. Do you know what I mean? Like a, it's a great temporary solution since we lost Quanis.
Well, I guess I'm looking at it, I live in Ward Two. Central is in Ward Four. And we have these neighborhood parks, and Wonderspilling is a great addition to that. But Quanis lost...
More dedicated courts.
But Quanis lost something.
I know.
You know, we have the, um, we have the gardens there and we have Wonderspilling. But we used to have parents teach their kid to hit the ball for the first time over there in that big green space. And people used to throw frisbees around there, where we now have the retention, uh, pot.
All of us love Quanis.
And now if we lose the courts, Quanis has gained some things, but they have also, if, if those courts don't come back, Quanis has lost a great amenity. So I'm still fighting for that.
We're open to like, we just, yeah, we're open to whatever you guys feel is the best solution. I want to say too about, when you're talking about the Wonderspilling, kids are probably going to be our new base demographic for pickleball. Like, they're learning how to play in schools. They had the unplayed kids this summer with crossroads. And we're with parents, volunteers, and kids. There was one-hundred-and-twenty-five people present each Wednesday. So, kids wanna play. And one of our goals is to do something for kids next summer. How do we teach, do something? Because especially that like ten-plus-year-old, they're amazing.
It's got an amazing site over there, Anisap, bathroom. And then there are so many closets for that. Don't take that amenity away.
Mr. Mayor, I circle back. As far as staff's recommendation, our real intention tonight was talking about the national averages. We thought it'd be very good information the council has as we consider our partnership with Central College. Once again, what our intention was is to have work sessions in the future to talk about the Quanis courts. Jeanette, as far as an estimated cost to renovate Quanis, am I off-base by saying about a half a million is what we had estimated?
A half a million would, would build new courts of the same size as far as renovations cost. We've looked at some options and, and depending on what you'd like to do, it's anywhere from ninety to one-hundred-seventy-eight thousand. But staff's recommendation would not be to put any more band-aids on that court. In my opinion, it would be a waste of taxpayer dollars. That facility is too far gone to be renovated. So, I think our discussion now is, do we remove the courts and replace them with new courts? Do we partner with Central College? Do we find another place for permanent pickleball courts? So, those are kind of the discussions going forward, but yeah, staff would not recommend renting those courts.
What we will do is we'll schedule this for a policy and planning item upon it with the Quanis courts. Well, financial estimates, and I think it's good information once again. May not agree with the numbers, maybe higher than the local demand in Pelham, readily admit this, but was asked of staff to provide averages, and that's what we intend to do. And I think they're good benchmark data to consider as we make investments in, in these amenities.
And if you go to the bottom of page three, Caldwell Park is mentioned. So, with respect, council member, if we're spending big bucks, in my mind, the logical thing to building courts at Caldwell, the players are already, yeah, parking. I love Quanis Park. It's not just anybody in the neighborhood. That's where we went with our kids. I think Caldwell really makes sense.
Okay.
So, I, I hear that this was some information to ponder. We will come back. If I remember our discussion the last time, there was an enthusiastic support to spend three-hundred-thousand dollars with Central College to get those courts. Then the question was to review and look at long-term needs of the community, which this is a start. And also, if council's ready to spend another half a million dollars on more pickleball courts, that's a discussion for another time, another night. That's not what we're talking about tonight. So, if we, if we're satisfied that we understand what our future needs are for pickleball based on what we've heard and what information we've given, then we can have an informed discussion about adding more courts. Once we get Central's, uh, what is it, twelve? Well, twelve, twelve plus six is eighteen, plus one in, in Rotary is, is nineteen, if my math's right. So, we're, we're meeting a lot of need. And the location, we can talk about location. Somebody's gonna be happy because it's next door. And other people are gonna have to drive to it. So, you could beat yourself over the head all day about where the location is. And it's gonna make some people happy. I, I, I think if we took a survey of every citizen in Pelham and said, would you like to have a park in your backyard? What do you think the response would be?
For dogs or humans?
What, what, for humans, or dogs? You're gonna get about a hundred percent say, yes, I'd like it there. So, I think we need to, we need to make informed with, with stats and, and have decisions about these longer-term things. Like I said, I think we, it felt to me like there was enthusiastic support to do the central thing that's gonna, gonna get us headed in the right direction. More discussion between the pickleball group and the city about expanding pickleball opportunities. Certainly something we need to keep talking about. Okay, let's move on to the comprehensive plan. Subdivision code zoning code update and wayfinding signage code.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Once again, I'd like to direct council's attention to this item. And this is, uh, from a planning standpoint, this is pretty exciting stuff. For the city's, I'm serious about this. Our comprehensive plan was last updated in two thousand and fourteen. So, for a city like Pelham, growing a ten-year time period is a pretty good time period. But when you think about all the developments that's happening in the community, we have a lot of exciting things going on. Now, the proposal that we have this evening before we get input from Dr. Spencer Carlstone and Jerry Biden on, on this item is we have a proposal to select Confluence to perform the next update for the, for the comprehensive plan. Total fees on the agreement that we're gonna be looking at, somewhere north of one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. And I wanna also make sure that we understand in addition to the comprehensive plan, which I feel is, you know, is exciting, usually takes about a year to do. It's gonna be a plan that establishes Pelham's vision for the next twenty years. And it's also serves as the basis for most zoning decisions, particularly rezoning decisions that we have. So it's a very important document. But equally important is also this proposal contains an update to the city zoning and subdivision codes. And when you work from a development standpoint, what we need to have with the comprehensive plan, the zoning code and the subdivision code is they need to be seamless. In other words, what is stated in one plan needs to be transitioned over to the other plans. If there's any type of discrepancies between the comprehensive plan and zoning codes and subdivision codes, I can promise one thing, that will result in delays for development. So these are all very three important items that we're considering this evening. Now, what we're here to discuss this evening is the recommendation of the committee to go with Confluence on this. And also, to ensure council doesn't have any questions before we consider a formal contract on that as well. So, Mr. Mayor, before we stop the presentation, I guess I'd like to turn it forward to Dr. Spencer Carlstone. I believe that served on the ad hoc committee on this to give input from the council's perspective in the ad hoc committee. And then I'd also like him to need a zoning director to also share his insights on this as well.
I would say we had some really good candidates. The interview, they were all excited to work with Pelham, which is, I think, really telling of the hard work of the last one-hundred-and-fifty years. And our reputation is super positive. So if these kind of firms have decided to work with us, I think they all put on their fancy shoes and tried hard. We had a nice group of different interests. We interest, we individually ranked them, cut our own opinions, and kinda scored them. And then, I think, I assumed it blindly, kind of took the scores together. Confluence scored the best. I thought, personally, I thought it was this balance of the process in which they went about this revision and also the dollar. So there were some that were higher, there were some that were cheaper, but for the, for what they brought to the table, I thought it was the best value. It was, uh, our previous several, I think, were done by the same firm. And I like the idea of we're going with a different firm just to have a different advantage point. Nothing against the old ones. They did great, and it's been a good plan we've been using. But a new set of eyes, I thought was helpful and potentially healthy for us. So, I'm excited about Confluence. I like how they're going to incorporate citizens' opinions. There's some really creative ways they like to engage the community. That would be extremely helpful to get the most community opinions possible in this process. So I think that's some really, I think, kind of fun and interesting ways to get all demographics involved from kids to residential residents. So, I, I thought they were a nice workaround. Gerald, do you have anything?
My two cents in the microphone. We have four firms that are RFPs. We eliminated one from being out of state with no experience in the state of Iowa, which we thought was pretty good. The three firms went through an RFP process with the committee. We're all ranked. Those firms were then interviewed again. So this was quite a, about a six-day week process. We went through talking to these firms, reviewing references, having conversations, having follow-up questions, quite elaborate sessions we've had with these. In the end, we chose Confluence. And I think one of the reasons that came back that was very unique for this firm is that of the references checked for Confluence, of all the five reference checks we did, they all came back glowing, and people actually volunteered additional information about Confluence that stated what a wonderful firm they were. This was from Des Moines, there's a couple counties around the area. Just amazing amount of feedback from their clients about the quality and caliber of the work that Confluence does. The other two firms didn't have that. So that was a big, you know, kinda like opened your eyes up. What is unique about Confluence also is they have specialized software that will deal with the public participation. Now, the comp plans are inherently not, even though Mike thinks they're the, you know, sexiest thing alive, to get the public sitting in this room involved in a comprehensive plan is, is a really hard task. It is a lot of, you know, pictures on paper and written policies and stuff that's just not exciting. Confluence really kinda sold us with their ability to run a specialized software and websites that do outreach through social media and other multimedia to get people involved. They actually go into the high schools, they go into the colleges, they go into Central Park, they'll go into Airway and solicit information from the public because in, in the end, this document represents what the public wants for Pelham. So getting their input in and feeding through the process is what we need to do. So, that was really what sold us. So again, if we go forward with Confluence, the next step of the process, again, I'm stepping, taking a bit of thunder away from you, Mike, is we'll set up a comprehensive technical committee of citizens that will work with the council and then go forward through the process. So right now, this is where we're starting, but Confluence was the highest-ranked firm that we interviewed.
You have, you have more?
The only, I, I'm not on the comprehensive plan on zoning or subdivision codes. I do have a wayfinding proposal as well, which I can discuss.
I would say it's important that we do update this. I think the time is now. Since I've been sitting in this chair, I think we've referenced our comprehensive plan more than any other document that we've looked at over the years. So I think it's important that it's well, well due to be updated, so I need to get it done.
I agree. I think the public needs to know what a heavy lift this is. This is a lot of work. And I wanna thank both Spencer and Gerald. It is a lot of work, but it is still necessary. It's the one document that I find myself referring back to a lot. So, thank you all.
What's it take about a year?
Normally. Okay. Okay. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. We've also talked about in the past when there's been citizens that have approached the city about the need for additional wayfinding signage in the community. And what we have is a proposal that Confluence is still fine-tuning, but they believe the estimate to conduct work sessions and provide it and to actually provide a draft wayfinding program would be between forty-four and fifty-two thousand dollars. And with this, we wanted to make sure that we resume the discussion on wayfinding on it. And we think this is the logical point to talk about wayfinding as a part of the comprehensive plan with it as well. A couple notes, we've tried this before on the wayfinding, and whatever we do, my recommendation would be is we have a discussion on the entities that are eligible to be on the signs before we start the work. That's usually the most difficult process with it as well. But again, the estimate that we have to develop the plan is somewhere between forty-four and fifty-two thousand. And before we get too far along with Confluence, we just wanted to make sure we resume the discussion, make sure it's something that council is interested in, in doing. And so we'll have a formal proposal for this one as well.
Well, we've done this for years.
Is that a yes?
That's a yes.
I agree. I think that wayfinding signs give depth to a community. And, um, to Mark's point, it is something we've kinda kept in the world for quite a, quite a long time, but we are towards now and it's a script. We, again, give depth and affective to those that come in business, mind and day.
Yeah, I think it makes sense to include both of the, of the plan.
Last item we wanna make sure we have a little discussion on is the finances on this. We had a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars budgeted for the comprehensive plan update. The funding source on this was actually the city's low-cost and sales and services tax fund. And Brian, I believe it was the previous tax that we had this reserved with. We believe we have funding in that remaining fund balance to fund both of these proposals. So I just wanna make sure from a funding standpoint, everyone realizes where, where the funding source is going to be from. So, let's go ahead, please, Mandy.
That's the last one.
What's that?
We're gonna go to the next topic.
Yeah, please. All right. Mayor, are we ready to transition?
Yeah.
Boston, this is actually some good news with the Boston golf course. I don't know if you've been out to see the play and the increased activity at Boston Golf Course, but it's been phenomenal turnaround for the course on it. As far as memberships are concerned, I think we're significantly up from what they've been in the past. Browns are up, and the good news is revenues are up as well. So, really positive. One of the items that we have for discussion is renewal of the city's equipment lease for the Boston Golf Course. And the community services staff actually went out and got proposals on, on the, on the equipment lease. And Mandy, we can go ahead to the next slide, please. We have up here is the three options that they had in there as well. Now, as far as the city's recommendation, what came from the community services department is they'd like to go up option number three. Maybe a little bit off on these numbers, but we're looking to buy... Maybe a little bit off on these numbers, but we're looking to buy four pieces of existing equipment, solicited equipment on a current lease. And then for option three, it'd be renting the remaining or leasing the remaining pieces of the equipment on the lease. Now, like everything, it's been challenging in city finances, is costs are up on this. This is no exception. If you remember the golf cart lease, we faced similar obstacles on that as well. In this particular case, the lease cost would be up about $28,000. So when you do factor in the one-time purchase, plus the lease cost, it's about $62,000. One of the things that we've tried really hard at city staff level is on items such as this, is to take a look at things with the goal of trying to make things revenue-neutral, working within our current budget parameters. And frankly, down in this day and age, that's very, very important. So we have the community services staff. Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Is we have approximately a $63,000 increase over the current budget. The good news is, as far as revenues, it looks to us that estimated revenue is up over $88,000. So with this proposal, from city administration's standpoint, we would classify this as revenue-neutral to the city, we believe, with it. But before presenting this for formal consideration, we wanted to make sure we had council's input on it. This is especially important because if you remember with the golf cart lease, because we had a lease purchase agreement over time, the city attorney's office, and I'm not speaking anything, that's the way Iowa law reads it, if you have a long-term lease, it's the same as a debt issue. So we're gonna incur legal fees on this matter before we start the process with legal counsel. That takes some time to get everything done, schedule the necessary public hearings on it. We wanted to make sure that council was in agreement or if they had questions on it, I believe that we address those before we started the process. So, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation. We'd more than happily answer any questions council may have on this item.
Okay. Questions, comments? Staff is recommending option three, buying, selling, leasing, renewing the lease?
Because usually they're detailed enough, I assume you factored in the mechanical work on the small amount of equipment that you're purchasing this option. And you're also detailed. So we talked about, one of the determines about all of it, option one, is the mechanical upkeep. Obviously, if you buy this used equipment, it's still present.
Right, yeah. So we'd be buying equipment that's five years old and has a significant amount of hours on it, which would increase operational costs for repairs. And we'd also need to hire staff to be able to do those repairs because we don't have anyone on staff right now that can work on the small engines. So.
Was I, was I an answer to your question? I was thinking you were asking about the four pieces we were gonna keep.
Well, that's my primary concern because that was the tracker on option one.
Can you go back?
Yeah. So the four pieces of equipment that we're proposing to purchase are low-hour pieces of equipment that don't get a lot of hours. So they wouldn't need the maintenance of some of those larger area.
We're hoping to avoid mechanical issues.
Right. So the equipment that we're purchasing is like a blower and an aerator and...
Not the highest.
Like a bunker dragging machine. So they're ones that don't get a lot of hours on them.
That kind of helps.
Who does the repairs? Is that local or does it depend?
It just depends on what it is. You know, we can couple some stuff together. We work a lot with the Toro folks on repairs specific to that equipment.
I remember the estimated legal fee was $10,000?
That is correct.
Well, that sounds high for what's probably boilerplate lease work.
Pursued on the law.
All right. Sounds like pursue option number three.
Thank you. Okay. Let's talk about the electric utility tonight. And we were recently contacted by a brokerage firm. And what they were looking to do is purchase some of the city's environmental allowances that we have. And we have some that are remaining from the old power plant that we got figured up on the board. For the council members that were on, council at the time, you'll recall this was quite an effort. I'm talking to Councilmember DeYoung and Councilmember Van Strile. This would have been, if you dialled back the clock 14 years ago, this was the city's number-one priority. So it was a big accomplishment to the city. And prior to city council, they did an outstanding job in the power supply plant for the community. And looking at this item with the brokerage firm, they're actually looking for nitrogen oxide ozone pollution allowances, commonly referred to as NOx. And their offer was for $825 per allowance, which totals right around $151,000 on it. The very first thing that we did at that time is we contacted our power supplier, Missouri River Interview Services. We wanted to make sure that there was nothing in our power supply contract, first and foremost, that required us to turn over the environmental allowances from the power plant to Missouri River. There's not. The second item is, as far as two other items, if there was with it, not if there was, but if there wasn't, we asked Missouri River if they were interested in purchasing the allowances. And they looked at it, they're always in the market on them, but they said for the price, they didn't feel that they'd be able to match it. And the third item is, once we got their feeling that they couldn't match it, just overall sense because they deal with allowances, environmental credits quite often, and they are the experts that we lean heavily on. And their recommendation was to proceed with the allowances that we have for $825. Now, with this, we wanted to make sure that we have, and we're still in the process, there's still a few items that we need to double-check on from legal counsel's standpoint before we can have a formal consideration. But before this item shows up on an agenda, we just wanted to make sure we answered council's questions because it's not an everyday item on this. And this is something that we will be employing the owner's law firm, the assistance side. They do have environmental, actually, utility attorneys that'll be reviewing the documents for us. And I need to do some more due diligence on the environmental side of, not on the environmental side of things, but on the city's power supply obligations that we have on it. So there's still some more due diligence at city staff. But if everything goes okay, we're permanently scheduled for September 3rd as far as formal consideration of this item.
Is there a market in the trade season?
Yes.
Is it, where's it listed?
What's that?
Do you know where it's listed? What exchange?
On the, there is a market. I don't happen to have the name of the exchange offhand, but they are listed. And that's something that, from Missouri River, that's why we contacted Missouri River on the market on itself.
So this is close to the market, right?
That's what we've been informed.
Yes.
That's what they're currently trading for, it's our understanding.
And where will it be in the future?
No, we don't anticipate that we're gonna need it in the future for operations of the power plant on it. So Missouri River doesn't need it either. That would be the next source that if we were to, our preferred sale would be to Missouri River.
So is this, is there a one-time, you sell credit, one time?
It's done.
There's not replenishing or?
That is correct.
Okay. So this will be a $150,000 one-time.
That is correct. That's a good way to describe it, Mayor.
And, I suppose, price fluctuation would be the only address if we don't do it?
That is correct. When we talked to the broker, they told us if this would have been a year ago, the credit creation somewhere right around $1,200 a ton on it. So the market goes up and down. And, you know, if we wanted to, when we thought at the staff level, we could try to monitor it and do a little bit more research. But the problem is, is this isn't our area of expertise. And usually when stuff like this pops, well, the first people that we ask is Missouri River for their input on it. So it depends on the market, whether it's gonna be higher at six months, that. And then also, you gotta find a willing buyer, too. So.
Now, they're not interested in $825, that's a lock.
Did you counter it at all?
What's that?
Did you counter it at all?
We have, what we have is a proposal for $825. We haven't countered on that. So we've been more evaluating it from the market rates to make sure it's the market rate and then also make sure it's reasonable for market diligence on the Missouri River side. Thanks.
Seems like prudent thing to do.
All right. Thank you. Let's move on for city administration updates. And we have an update on a few of the projects we've been working on. And we'd also be happy during this session, if council has questions on other projects that are going on. But all of these items, we anticipate, are gonna be presented as policy planning sessions in the next 30 days. And we want to make sure we set the proper tone and framework for the discussions. The first one that we have is for the memorial building. And council recalls during the budget work sessions, we talked about the estimated cost to renovate the memorial building at that time. What's in the budget is roughly a $300,000 estimate. We have exterior work, window replacement, roof repairs. And there's also some foundational work at the memorial building. The issue with the memorial building is the quote that we had for the renovation cost dates from 2021. So it's somewhat dated. It's likely these costs are going to be higher on it. What we wanted to inform council is we're planning on the work session in September. And if you recall, we talked about it in terms of potential projects that could increase the city's debt service levy. And maybe a little bit off on this, but we said when we approved the budget that there is roughly a number of projects that we were proposing, general obligation bond issues. If the city proceeded with the general obligation bond issue, and a total of all these projects had increased the debt service levy by about a dollar ten. The memorial building is one of the projects, and what we talked about is potentially using it for other purposes to see if it's still what it used to the city. That discussion is coming in September. But before we get into September, unfortunately, we had some roof repairs due to the heavy rains that hit the community on it. I see Jeanette, I'm looking for Jeanette to explain this, but we have actually had some water damage on the memorial building with the roof. You can see the pictures up there between the holes in the roof and the flashing that we have. And looking at it, we also had our public work staff look at this, look at the damage on it. And what they're recommending from a staff standpoint is to replace the roof on it and to get the damage taken care of. We got a quote from a contractor to replace the roof. They could get started within two weeks on the project. It's for $66,000. And based on our recommendation, we're proposing to proceed under the emergency procedures, under the city's emergency procedures. But before we sign that work order, we wanted to make sure that council had concerns or further discussions on it. We wanted at least to inform, A, inform council, and then B, make sure we addressed any concern before proceeding with the roof replacement.
You say if it's leaking bad, it could only further damage everything, more inside. So it's big.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I get one comment.
Yes, sir.
Bruce Borchi has written a really good history on this building on Facebook. I think it's on Facebook. It's a lot. It's interesting. Information.
Yeah. Mr. Borchi's extremely knowledgeable buildings within the community. And I find his articles very interesting. So thank you. Okay. Let's talk about another renovation that we have on here is 215 Main Street. And one of the items that we have, if you recall, we talked about this project during the budget process. And it seemed like there was a consensus to proceed with the project. What we recently had was some damage to our elevator at the building. And we have an estimated cost of the project. If you recall, during the 2025 budget, which is the current fiscal year, we had a project budget of $1,313,000. We now have, if we need to replace the elevator, that cost is estimated to be $1,474,000. We're gonna schedule a work session in September on this item. And the reason why, if you recall, the funding source for this project, we're proposing to issue a $900,000 bond. That appears to be the upper limits that we could issue under Iowa law without referendum. So when you look at the $900,000 bond on a $1,313,000 project, and you add in $160,000 of cost, the key question is, where's the additional funding coming from? And that's what we're working on right now. So again, once we have the funding for it, we're gonna come back with the work session and make sure we're all on the same page with it. And that's again, scheduled for September. Okay. Ambulance consultant report. We have a work scheduled, session scheduled for September on this as well. Staff is currently working with the consultant on their recommendation. We anticipate that's gonna be presented to council in September on the matter. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my project updates. Be happy to answer any questions on these three or any other project the city's undertaking.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Anybody have anything else you'd like Mike to discuss?
Just the report that Robert Hall emailed. Everybody's got the whole report.
Well, as far as the total, that's the report we're working on right now. I think it's all, so.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. DeYoung, Carlstone, all in favor, please say yes. For no, please call a no.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ian Franklin?
Yes.
Peter Works?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.